Good evening, welcome to the Wilson Central School District Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, April 23rd, 2024. My name is Tim Carr, the Superintendent of Schools. I usually make mention at the end of the board meeting, we usually have time so aside for a public comment. If you're in the audience, you have the opportunity to address the board. If you're not in the audience and you're watching this afterwards or in real time, you have the opportunity to call 711-9399, book 716, if it doesn't work anymore. If you call that number, your name is Mr. Vaughn, and she'll direct you to question, comment, or concern to the board. At this time, I'll turn the board being over to President Carr.
Thank you Superintendent Carr, please stand and join me in the flight of importance. What do we need?
The United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our
Item one B approved meeting in the state of April 16th, 2024, amend motion?
So what?
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose. Motion, Carr. Item two A, resolved at the Wilson Central School Board of Education approved following my speed through D and financial consent. Agenda is submitted by the administration, amend motion?
So.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose. Motion, Carr.
Item three, special presentations, we actually had three this evening, and we'll start out by introducing Mike Wyner. Mike is the Director of CTE at Orleans, and I have a boss today, give me the right title.
Yep.
Awesome. And Mike's going to talk a little bit about the Skills USA program, and then we're going to recognize some of our students that either placed first or second in the Skills USA. Take a relief.
Thank you very much for being here. Skills USA is a leadership organization for students, it's a period of academic education. It prepares students for what's the next step in their future by developing attributes that link directly to appropriate employability, personal skills, and thriving for leadership and being good qualities, instance. Within Skills USA, under that chapter, we do have the opportunity for competitions, and statewide as well as nationally, you will find students competing under their expertise or specialty in program, which are listed for some of the five you have there, as well as multiple others. And it's broken out into three stages. You have your regional competition, for us, we competed Elfrin, which is the five students who are going to be recognized tonight. Tomorrow, all the students throughout the state are heading off to Syracuse for the state competition, where you will compete in all those categories and that is some as a state competitor. These students are going to be ranked potentially in the top three of the entire state. Any student that is placed first within Skills USA state competition is offered the opportunity to compete at the national level, which is in Atlanta this year. So it's a progressive competition that's focused on teamwork, quality knowledge, and expertise in their specialty of program. So that is a very quick rundown, there's much more to it, but that is the short side of Skills USA and how we operate within these nine goalcies, along with other goalcies throughout the state and nation.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. It's my pleasure to recognize the following students for their contributions and their commitment to the Skills USA program. First is Austin Gordon, I didn't see him. The first one is Austin Gordon, I didn't see him. But Austin is going to receive this tomorrow, a certificate from the Wilson Central School District. Certificate of Excellence is hereby granted to Austin Gordon for outstanding performance in the 2024 Skills USA Regional One Competition, first place restaurant service competition. Congratulations, Austin. Marcella, can you come on up? This is Marcella Crowley, and well, heavy standards of mixed reviews. And this certificate from the Wilson Central School District is a certificate of excellence. It's hereby granted to Marcella Crowley for outstanding performance in the 2024 Skills USA Region One Championship. He took second place in annual career competition. Congratulations. This is Joseph Hughes, I swear he wasn't just called that. Going by the day. This is a certificate from the Wilson Central School District, certificate of excellence is hereby granted to Joseph Hughes for outstanding performance in the 2024 Skills USA Area One Regional Competition. He took second place in the Extraterrestrial.
Extraterrestrial.
Thank you.
Speaking of competition, this is me.
Extraterrestrial. And what does that mean?
Not prepared. So they give you five minutes to prepare a five-minute speech on a topic you know nothing about, and then give it and then done.
Wow. Sorry, you said, can we just? Alright, this certificate's for Sidney Zimendorf. Certificate of Excellence hereby granted to Sidney Zimendorf for outstanding performance in the 2024 Skills USA Area One Regional Competition. Sidney took second place in the TV Video Production Team Competition. I have your turn. So this is Kyle Hammer, and you're receiving this certificate from the Wilson Central School District. Certificate of Excellence is hereby granted to Kyle Hammer for outstanding performance in the 2024 Skills USA Area One Regional Competition. Kyle took second place in power equipment technology. Awesome. Congratulations to all of us in Sydney. Our second presentation this evening. Oh, we should do cupcakes. This is on, you want to open a motion? This is a good one to go. May 7th, another good one, cupcakes. No, it's 10 years. Then the first meeting in June is good, we do that. Cupcakes again. We have two more presentations. Our second presentation is going to be from Carolyn Oliver, our Business Administrator. She's going to give an update to the 2024, 2025 school budget.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Quik. I'm sure also my board members here have heard at the State budget pass that we were given back some of our foundation aid from the prior year, which is fantastic. We were made completely level with last year. Of course, we love to see an increase, but the way things were going, we will take the level of last year. So that put back in about $550,000 into our budget. So I just put in front of you, board members, a revenue update. Or what I did with the tri-component before it goes out is I put that additional foundation aid on the dating total. I took away what we did not need to use in reserves. So the reserves went down to $60,000 used for next year, and the dating went up to 14,802,297. So that's the update I have for you. I also gave you the beginning of the tri-component, which will be available when all the building's tomorrow. It just shows the revenue and expenditures broken out by the three required components, capital, administrative, and program. So that's all I have for you tonight. Those are things we talked about before. If you've been to a board meeting, our board members, you know, we talked about if we did get some of that money back, we'll put it on the line, and we'll lower the reserve use, you know, the less reserve used to balance the budget, the better. We might be able to afford the programming that we do offer, so we're in good shape for next year. Of course, I'm sure you all heard the year after that, I'm not expecting to be held on. So we will have to make some adjustments and make sure that we can afford the programming that we offer. I'm sure we will work hard to figure that out and keep all the programs we have going, and let's just hope for the good. So that's all I have for tonight. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Board members, if you've been following the budget process, one of the educational gurus now come out and spoke on the budget, and pretty much have said this is sort of a foreshadowing of what's to come. So while the legislature was legislated, branch was able to pull back some things and at least level it out, there was other districts that weren't held on this. Instead, using the 4.8 CPI, like these two before, they were, while they got increases, not close to what they were expecting increases. So, you know, most of the budget experts are saying this is a foreshadow of what's to come in the future, that there's going to be some, you know, drastic alignment of the new formula. Now that the Rockefeller Center is going to be, the Rockefeller Institute is going to be asked to help work on the the foundation aid formula. That's not necessarily a great thing for school districts, because the director of the Rockefeller Center is a former budget director from Mario Hallm. So he basically is the governor's state thing, just going to be working on both the foundation formula. So let's see what that looks like as a headcount. There were a couple of budget minute short, one-hour lunch webinars. One was this second noon, one was at nine o'clock, something over breakfast webinar. If I get the videotape of that, I'll send it out to each board member if you want to watch it. I haven't received it yet.
Okay, item C, Wonders Reading Series Presentation, Mr. Wilkie, put down. Mr. Yen.
Alright, Yen, good evening, everyone. So we will be interested in reading series at elementary school last year. This came about because the reading series that is currently in use was going away. The company was no longer going to support it. So this, we did not start by looking for something new, something that we had to do, and we had to do it for next school year. So just to walk you through the process that we used to pick this program out of the first step. And then I sat down and there is a company called Pen Reports, and they are an unbiased third-party company that looks at all curriculum, ELA, math, science, social studies, and they give scores. So we narrowed down all the ELA curriculums that across the board reached these expectations. And so we started with those, and then Yen did a lot of reaching out to reps from companies. We got samples, and the samples were in our faculty room for quite a long time. Then we set up a committee. I let anyone who wanted to be on the committee join. I had to suggest each grade level team that they send at least one representative to kind of share what their grades are looking for. And then we met, had initial meeting, set the groundwork in the first month, and that was just that reviewing. We had four choice to basically work with. After we spent a month looking at that, we narrowed it down to two choices, Wonders and another option. We got presentations from the reps from those companies. We did a lot digging into the needs of our kids. And ultimately, after a couple long brainstorming and discussion settings, we ignored our markers. And so it's something we're really excited about. You know, at any time you're going to choose something school-wide brand, it's going to be a learning curve, it's going to take time. But the important thing is that it's going to build consistency in the middle. K through V is using this program, every teacher, every medium, so as students go through, we're really going to see the benefits of this when actually their kids have been created, because they would have went through an entire program the same way. Two works ended up, and that did a little bit too well, what the program intends.
So I basically have a brochure, and what I did was I thought, this is a folder here for you guys, but I just took some main slides from the brochure that appear, so we'll go over them. Some of the key aspects of this program, I'm sure you all heard about the Science of Reading. So based on the Science of Reading, this program wonders as meets expectations, all the expectations of the Science of Reading. And if you step aside, we'll go to the next slide. You'll see the, all the areas that it meets the expectations, which the foundational reading skill, phonics, word analysis, fluency, reading literature, reading informational tasks, comparing tasks, vocabulary, researching. On the writing side, they have still state may lessons, with writing, narrative writing, argumentative writing, solid grammar, and writing, speaking, listening, following instructions, and creating and elaborating.
I think it's super helpful that the program is so comprehensive in the reading and writing, just because even though the program is incomplete, we know that teachers were supplements in part of it. So the program was just kind of answered. So pretty much any resource that a teacher believes to teach at LA is now in this program, it will net up with us much, but they're fully valid materials.
I'll just touch on while we're talking about that. I have two samples, first grade, for faculty to take a look at. And then fourth grade, because they both have word triggers. So what the younger level comes with is they have level readers for students at different levels of reading. There's a variety of different types. You have approaching, you have on level, and then you have beyond level readers. You get also good vocabils, which is helpful for students to learn reading and the literacy, early learning skills. So with each program, each grade level, in addition, this is for younger levels, but for the older levels, you get a writing companion book that students can write in, and it goes right along with the actual anthology that has all the stories inside it. So these will be copies that teachers will keep here and here with the stories inside. But then the writing companion is what the students are able to write in and even actually take home. So this is something that goes on with them, and they can do, they're willing to. So they have whole levels for all grade levels. The teachers receive a lot of resources as well. We have instructional routines sample, which basically has step-by-step instructions for each of the lessons. We have good tests, we have placement and diagnostic testing. We have benchmark assessment, and we have progress monitoring testing. So there's a lot of resources. Along with the print materials, we also have the digital resources, all the teacher resources and also the student resources as well digitally. So if you go to the next slide, this talks just about the quality of instruction for all learners, English language learners, writing, and conventions of English, social and emotional learning as well. And the next is the level of literacy begins with V. Also, a big focus at the early ages is on phonics. So we'll be using this along with the program, the hierarchy program that we are currently using as well. We're seeing a lot of success. And then to just go through, if we reach every learner, learner, differentiated learning opportunities for those who might be struggling, to those who may be expelling, you know, how can you differentiate your instruction in the classroom? And then the next goes into the writing portion of the book, which is something we're really hoping, we don't really have a writing program right now at elementary school. Each teacher or grade level has been doing something independently. And so we're really trying to work on that consistency, K through V, making sure that there is a consistent writing program, consistent writing.
And just, and everyone doing the same thing, and it's important that, you know, say we have students that start their own classroom, and maybe they get an I C E and they use social classrooms in summer. What they did in September through December should be the same, you know, always. I'm a big believer in consistency. Every teacher, whatever, has been on things, but the same principle should happen in this process for that.
I believe the next, okay, there's the writing for the test data beyond. They have online readers, so there's one that they can do online, but also we do have.
Yeah, the board was very adept that they said that the entire thing could be done online, that the entire thing could be done in these books, and teachers are accessible. So I think that's helpful for small group instruction, you know, a lot of those kids to still be working on their peers in small groups, or maybe that are absent, they can walk in at home, you know, that they can do things over, gives a lot of flexibility. But we want eyes on books in tax, so it's very important that we still have that, that type of thing, style of working.
And working on handwriting as well.
Yes, that's all the data.
Yeah, that's a good question. First of all, will teachers have access to all of that material for the children that's launched to purchase everything?
Yes.
Okay. Second thing. Can I bring it? So are you taught the printing, person? Do you have the end of position?
I don't think this comes with a specific person program. No. There's the debate, there's standards that say that it's recovered, and then it's usually one of the things that's like, oh, you know, the time and the date for it. But this program doesn't cover that, but there'd be, we have decided to be sure you'll probably do something.
Okay. So again, this goes into the social information, and it's all in the back end. And then, yeah, same thing, helping students take ownership for their, their learning, building knowledge through meaningful authentic literature that is in, within the text and in the anthology itself. Also, the actual materials that they have online for students, as well as the faithful readers for the kindergarten, first grade, the vocabils, and the level.
This is something I was going to say about when you opened up the book, these anthologies, it's not all just stories that McGraw-Hill set, wrote. So they've taken excerpts from real books, from credible authors. And then there's suggestions that the older grade levels or book studies and chapters that can be even flying into this. So again, getting eyes on, like, if that's real, real stories that are well-known from credible authors.
And again, with inconsistency, they're going to read these stories all in the third grade, then going into fourth grade, the fourth grade teachers from the class were mentioning the stories or, you know, the text that was referred to in third grade. So all students will say, oh, yeah, I remember this story, instead of it being one class did it, but the next class, you know, in the third grade did it. So that the teachers can refer, so that'll be very helpful. Every teacher can be ready from day one. This is something that we're very good about later on in the program, on the agenda. We're going to, they usually have my question of attendance for the company. Before the end of school, teachers will have the information that they need to prepare for the end of the summer, so that they're not getting information all the summer, and they're not trying to do it on the fall. Have that information by the time, so that going into summer, they know they need to plan for, they can work collaboratively, collaborate to play together, they can do the step-fallen together over the summer, and be ready for September.
And we have to this, we're very lucky to have a better staff at West. They're able to do this, this is not here, but we're going to get a couple handful of teachers every single year. And the amount of help with lesson planning, and suggestions, particularly with this, the time, the teacher version of the online for this is super helpful, especially if you get new teachers in there and do a little bit more direction. This really lays it out, and the new teachers a lot of support.
You can, if you have a substitute that day, and someone to present a lesson, and the substitute may not be, you know, may not know what they're, they put a video of what the lesson should be like or something similar to that, based on the information that is in our online teacher version. So they can have access to presenting that, so the students won't lose instruction if they're the substitute for a day. There's just a lot, you can extend and connect and assess for, and then units, they're going to then, it'll piggyback to the next unit, and then once we're through the previous unit. Lots of differentiation, I guess, there is, they really promote small group work with this program, less whole group, and more small group, teaching and instruction. You know, just teaching to the students, there's a lot of room for. And this just talks about how listening, speaking, elaborating creates readers, writers, communicators, and thinkers. And this just talks about their, that is, plus. I recommend that we have to be prepared for the worst. Our presentation, do you have any questions for?
For the, for the current students, it's going to be like a big jump up, I guess, going to fifth grade, like going to this program, or maybe.
So, no, sorry, your vision.
No, I'm.
So that's something that we looked at a lot, so a lot of feedback, because we also reached out to local school districts, the rest of the area using this versus the other one. And a lot of feedback with all of the programs, I just feel all of that is the readers. Um, so that's something that in the initial year, we could see, um, five year two that should help uh, go down a little bit because they were bad in year before. Um, but rigorous is not a bad thing, um, we want our students to change, you know, and that's where differentiation comes in. Um, you know, students, teachers are going to need to adjust their instruction to meet learners where they are. Um, but um, you know, and with students sit down sort of, sort of read text instructionally. Um, their instructional reading levels should be, um, point is, we're frustrating, much too difficult for them. That their instructional level, they're, they're dependent on reading. Right, so where they're reading, when they go home, that should be something that can read every word that she shows. When they're reading from their teacher, yeah, it might be a little trickier than they're your student, that's good because I might set the bar higher, um, you know, to, to, to against, uh, cheating more. And that was, it's gonna be with all of the programs. Like I was so excited in five years, we're talking about our kindergarteners that went through at this consistency and aspire over the through, um, anywhere we're going to be.
Any question for her?
I just had a couple brief ones, if that's all right. First of all, just regarding the kind of shift from our current program to the one, you know, the one we need to, um, you know, uh, talking about, you know, five, 10 years down the road, like being in such a future looking position. Uh, how long were we working with the previous program or it shifted? Cause I know sometimes, you know, not here, but I hear stories about, you know, districts jumping program, the program, things like that. So, you know, I, I thought from your perspective and that of the program, this, this is like pretty well all, so to speak, so I was curious.
The current program, it was within the times I've been here.
It was 2007.
2007, so the first year I was here, we selected the, the current reading program. And again, um, it was at no fault of our own, but the companies, well, getting them away, so they added, had to switch. The other thing to keep in mind too, so um, a cycle of kids getting through billing is a typical lifespan of a grading series. Um, so for example, this is the 2023 version of orders, they had a 2018 version. So even if, like, they changed after five years, and that's not to say you want, so we ordered, we were ordered the 2018 version. But, you know, five years, I would say it's typically the lifespan. I told the teachers when we were picking this that buckle in because that's, it's gonna be five or six years. So that'll be a really good time to implement it because again, when our kindergarteners next year leave West, that's, they'll be the first group to have gotten it all the years if they were there. So it'll be the best idea of this, of the program. I won't judge the program after next year, two reasons, one, your first year age, implementing it for it, it's hard on the teacher. Um, so it's probably not going to be implemented as good as it will been the year of that year. Um, and then for what we just talked about, it's gonna be a change for the kids, the, the rigor of it. Um, so we'll start judging it after a couple years and just collect data on, um, hopefully see if we're reading it well.
Okay, and I guess that I'm trying to piggyback him off of that. Um, you mentioned that, you know, there was a lot of faculty that were, you know, making these decisions. I'm, I'm actually curious about the, uh, you know. Perhaps weak and strong points of our previous program that a faculty identified that this, you know, this choice addresses. And, I mean, you don't need the super particulars, of course, but uh, just curious.
Well, about the, the program specifically, um, writing is a, is a big thing that they were concerned about. So this does have a writing program and it's also important to say that no matter what curriculum we would have chosen, there is not one perfect one. It, it doesn't exist or else every school in the state would use it. Um, so we might find out here or two that, you know, uh, some, an imperfection of this, um, of, of concern with writing was for journeys. But the bigger concern that I noticed correctly by law was that even with the curriculum itself, it was with the inconsistency of what was used and who used it. Um, there was not accountability of, you know, this person needs to do this, um, and there will be. So every teacher K through five will be using this program and that will be an option. So, um, and then that's up to me to be in classrooms and make sure it's happening and helping teachers implement it and, and helping them, which it's not going well. But you, right now, when we go through and look at it, um, the L A lesson plans, it's not, it's not all journeys. So, so that's a bigger issue, because then you get the kids the next year and you thought you did this, 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 you know.
Right, right. Get that answered my, my next question, but I guess, uh, the other thing I was curious about, um, you mentioned that this program incorporates original uh, material as well. So, you know, materials adapted from, you know, literature. And uh, I'd be curious, do you know what the ratio to the superiors that they, uh, they use? Cause uh. I'm sorry, no, because I'm, I'm like, I mean, I'm sure all of us aren't, reading is, is, is fantastic, but showing kids the options outside of, you know, the reading book, uh, is huge. So when, when, when something is going to springboard, then into the library, that's so.
I, I don't know the ratio, we can, we can reach out to owners and get that, but what, the other cool thing is, especially at older grades, it's, it will be a snippet from chapter book. So the goal is, you know, we, we read these three pages, let's hope it is, and now they want to go off and I want to finish this book or I want to read the rest of it. So I'm only going to find it and read it. So, um, you know, that's the whole, um, but I'm not sure.
And uh, have we made any arrangements to making sure that you still serve the library? Because uh.
Once we get this list, we'll definitely share it with data and that's absolutely, that's really important and the common topics we want. And we'll actually have a lot of kids trying to check those, which will be absolutely.
And then I guess my final question, I apologize for, don't you know this, but uh. I, I, it's all for the kids. No, I, uh, I, I'm just curious about the, um, you know, one of the historic pitfalls of programs like this that I've, you know, heard about from different, uh, you know, teachers I've talked to. Is uh, some of these just create this just monolith of material options that just basically broke teachers' little, it's like, here it is, this giant like haystack of stuff, good luck, you know? And I feel like that creates two problems. One of them is the, the forceless who try to do everything and uh, just realizing that there isn't enough time in the day. And then the ones who uh, just are completely just floored by the mouths of stuff in front of them, just abandon it altogether. So I'm curious whether, you know, at a program level or at a planning level, like what, uh, what this approach is going to include to make sure that, uh, you know, that kind of material will, is.
Yeah, so um, one great thing about the, the planning section on the teacher version of the website is, um, it gives you, you know, your plan for the day, but then you can adjust. So say they suggest you're going to do this for 120 minutes and it's a day where today we have 75 minutes to do, to do the L A. You can put in 75 minutes and it'll help you prioritize. And it'll tell you that these are the things you actually need to cover, so I'm sure. Um, cause there is absolutely way more materials than is realistic to get through. And then there's no expectation that they're going to be able to do everything. They have, we got them everything, they have it at their disposal.
So actually that's where teachers are going to have options, basically.
Options, yeah, yeah. And the, and the amount of time spent on literacy, probably decrease a little bit, you get some older grades. So you have the, the K one, two, they're probably spending about 120 minutes, so they'll be able to get through more. Third, fourth bit starts to go down, 100 minutes, 90 minutes. Um, I would say it's, it's typical that there's at least 90 minutes, fifth grade is more on 60. Um, but so, but the program will help them just.
Well, I mean, and that's outstanding because I, yeah, like, I'm thrilled to hear about the breadth of material available, but uh, that guy's way of, uh, you know, helping people tailor it into their lessons, you know, there's other things to debate, that's encouraging. Thank you, those are all my questions, I appreciate you indulging me.
So Margaret, if that. Maybe transferring. Like, you're ever there, anything you need, like last week.
So one thing that we struggle with when kiddos come in half way through the year is we don't know exactly what they got, where they were coming from. Uh, especially if they come from out of state. Um, but what this does have is it has diagnostic assessments. So right when the kid comes, we can see where they're at. Um, and then the teacher, when they're working in a small groups can help figure out based on those level readers, are they going to go into my full reading achievement rating at level or beyond? Um, and then as they get into the curriculum development, teachers, after they spend a little time with them, they can see the areas of skill that they need to brush up on.
Unless they come to the middle of the unit and they talk about, you know, something, I'm sure that the teacher will provide review things, uh, review stories, review exercises to crack them up on. Maybe like, like the idea that for a lot of the class or, you know, the topics, the characters, the stories, nothing overwhelming. And we hold them accountable for the things that they will miss, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, orders, uh, you can expect the resolution on our recent board meeting to approve the under series as our official series of the elementary book. And um, as you probably saw in this agenda, there's a date in June, um, where the 17th of June, which is a Monday. It's a, uh, high school, middle school, I already doesn't have school because it's a reduced reading day, there's no reduced exams that day. Um, so students are not in, but it's a reading day for the teachers. Um, the, the ask is to make it an element to the professional development day and give the teachers an opportunity to receive materials. Look at the materials and work together with the company in order to be able to give them a head start over the summer. So you'll see that on your, the, the agenda.
Okay, uh, again, thank you Cecily, Mr. Milwaukee for the presentation. Item four, a, approved non-instructional substitute, a mandatory non-instructional substitute, we center upon self-service requirements. And New York State vagrant clearance, can I have a motion?
Some.
Second, second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion here. Item B, approved substitute teacher, Michael France, substitute has met New York State vagrant clearance, can I have a motion?
Some.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion here. Item five, a resolved, the Board of Education of the Wilson Central School District hereby approves the proposed 2024-2025 administrative budget for the Orleans Niagara Board of Cooperative Education Services in the amount of $3,151,021. Can I have a motion?
Some.
A second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion here. Item B, resolved, the Board of Education of the Wilson Central School District asks one vote for each vacancy to be filled on the Orleans Niagara Board of Cooperative Education Services. There are four vacancies to be filled at the annual election held on April 23rd, 2024. The four candidates are Keith Bond, Gasport, New York, Roald and Arden, Arden Central School District. Dr. Bruce Fraser, Lockport, New York, Lockport City School District. And Edward Gravowski, Medina, New York, Medina Central School District. And Wayne Lottens, Albion, New York, Albion Central School District, and a motion.
Some.
Second.
Second.
Any questions?
Second question, but may I explain the candidates a little bit? First, is yours before, before, nobody really knows most of these people and I work with them quite a bit. Uh, Keith Bond has been on the board for probably 20 years, I think, something like that. He's, he's in Gasport, he owns a, oh, what's called a catering business. He, he's been a very good board member. Dr. Bruce Fraser is the principal at Wilson, he went to Lockport, he's traveled all around. He's well versed in education, so I, I think he would be a good candidate. Ed Gravowski was a teacher at Orleans Niagara Bosse's and he retired and he's now on the board. And he's also a judge, so he's, he's done a lot for Bosse's. And Wayne Lottens is also a teacher in Albion. Uh, he was board president for a while and then he relinquished that and he's been a very productive board member. So I don't think there's any problem with us going to, for any one of them.
Thank you, uh, just keep proud of anybody else. Can I have a motion? Uh, first and second, that's correct. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion here. Item C, approved the Wilson Central School District, voting kind of 2024-2025, can I have a motion?
Some.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion here. Item B, approved the memorandum agreement between the Wilson Central School District, the Wilson Teachers Association and May and Mike regarding tuition rate first, can I have a motion?
Some.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion here. Item B, approved memorandum of understanding between the Wilson Central School District and the Wilson Teachers Association regarding the creation of a fallen literature leading post and standard schedule, can I have a motion?
Some.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion here. Item F, approved, Wilson Elementary School to conduct a full day of professional development on June 17th, 2024 and train staff on the new E L A curriculum. There will be no student attendance on the state, can I have a motion?
Some.
A second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion here. Item G, approved the agreement between the Wilson Central School District and the Bella Associates D P C to approve all necessary architecture and engineering services for the 2024-2025 capital outlay project to be completed at the Wilson Elementary School, can I have a motion?
Some.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion here. Item M, approved, Rachel Feely, a student enrolled at Liberty University, commit 30 hours, complete 30 hours of observation, including one formal lesson, a checked required place for social studies teacher for May 13th, 2024, or June 25th, 2024. Can I have a motion?
Some.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion here. Six policies, Mr. President Carter.
Thank you, President Carter, you'll see uh, five policies before you even go through them. You've had them in your news and bills, so we'll run to the study. On this time, I'm, I'll let you know that the first one is a revised policy. It used to be called X and T ballot, now it's uh, X and T military early, early male ballots. Policy 1640, it had been revised in response to the New York Early Male Voter Act, which created a process to allow New York state voters the opportunity to vote early by mail. In advance of election day, closely marrying the existing X and T voter process. As part of the New York Early Voter Act, the following sections were added in the, uh, there were new section added to the education law, uh, which applies to districts to provide for personal registration of voters and applies for districts that utilize poll lists. There's also been a legal challenge to this constitutionality of the legislation, but as of right now, the law has been upheld and is constitutional. As you can see, there's just many small wording changes and things like that. Um, however, on page three of three, you'll see early male ballot, um, has been added to the list. Um, items all in blue is brand new. Any questions about this policy?
Resource wise, are we uh, equipped to take care of this?
Whatever it shows. We'll be okay. Um, we did it, we, we had to test, remember to encode it?
Yeah.
We had to do them all, so everything edited now, so uh, handling a handful here and there is not, that could be a, a major stumbling block.
Just wanted to make sure there wasn't a lot of scrum in the order.
We did one of those code.
Nothing.
Thirty-three, ten, policy thirty-three, ten, community relations, public sector. There is uh some language change for filling foil requests. What it basically does, it kind of organizes it based upon what our uh, what the law says, which is you have to have a records access officer that we do. You know, there's timeframe for filling foil requests and there's all sorts of things that you have to do. So what this policy does is just brushes up to meet the the most current guidelines for fulfilling foil requests under the Freedom of Information Law. And we get periodic and throughout the, you know, throughout the school year, our records access officer is over there. She takes care of all foil requests and the average, you know, portfolio of foil requests a year, some are easier than others. If you have any uh questions, I'll be glad to answer, I'm very glad to answer those questions. But you can see there's there's two sections, three sections to change. It basically is higher notification uh of of the process for foil, whose records access officer is. And then they put some uh, Kelly Elsens on the first pitch. Policy fifty-one thirty is budget adoption. You can see just some minor changes on contingency budget budgets, it blew. There was some cross outs and some additional ads agreeing about the district budget for the school year. Any part of the budgets during the proposition involving expenditure money for that skilled school year will not be sufficient for a vote, uh, of the qualified district voters more than twice. So if you're allowed to vote on a budget twice, um, and then it would fall to contingency budget. You can see there's just some clarifications to this particular uh policy that last was updated in two thousand and eighteen. And there's also, it refers to policy fifty-one ten, the budget budgeting development. And you can see that there there's new laws that come in place that make us make these changes. Any questions on budget adoption? The next one is uh, policy fifty-one forty, administration of the budget. And you can see the statement total funding allocation, that section had been deleted uh at bottom. That's the only uh, there's no longer required by law. The district annually submit to the administration of budget a detailed statement. I mean, we still have to put quite a bit into uh our business world per se, but um, they took that, saved it up. There are two more, one is fifty-two thirty, and that's the acceptance of gifts, grants, or the requests of the school. You can, you know, if you got a chance to read through it, most of it is just editorial stuff that makes it a little easier to read and to follow, uh, you know, as a school district, good, the board of education, you know, we as individuals can accept gifts, those of worth, we can accept gifts, donations and things like that. So this just sets that policy in place, um, that says all gifts uh become district property. So no one immediately will mix up the given on behalf of the district. And the last one is policy fifty-one fifty, and that actually is all crossed off because we're asking to delete this policy from our policy, part of our policy. How did is to delete this one because they just added it to the one that we just read, which was uh adoption and budget. So those are the policies, board members. They will be back in news and notes and look to be approved. If you have any questions between now and the next term, we can at least not hesitate to ask. Five or six policies did go to the shared student making team last week. So if you have a question and you want to ask the board member, you can ask the two members. Trust me, Ken and trust me both sitting there both on the shared student making team and I'm sure that they'll have to answer questions also.
Thank you, Superintendent Carter, nothing for policy adoptions. Item seven, conference reports, sharing success in D E I conference report written by Paul Delkovich.
Thank you, you're welcome. On March twenty-sixth, I had a put a attendee conference called Sharing Success in D E I at all here with Bosse's. Conference centered around diversity, equity, and inclusion, highlighted Sweet Home and Williamsburg School Districts. Both districts have emphasized the E I shirt where they started, where they are now, well, they've gone a long way. Sweet Home shared their revision of digital statements for the districts, how they're centered around the E I. They spent a lot of time talking about how they were re-dating their hiring processes, uh, improvement, basically trying to make it more culturally diverse. One of the things that they started doing was requiring all committee members to take a bi-trade before they enter an interview committee. And then they've also started to audit their committee panels after those are going to be accepted. Fluted uh to look for both the comments and look for any bias, try to, kind of course, track uh true. Williamsville, very similar, talked about how the E I was really centered around nice, uh, culturally responsive and sustained education framework. They had a clear line up between the E I plan and the strategic plan. And they had a number of guest speakers from the district on topics such as culturally, relatively, critically instruction, specifically engaged classroom, student voice choice, and productive struggle. Probably the biggest thing that I took away from what Williamsville shared was a simple kind of breakdown of D E I. They said that diversity is a fact, actually it's a choice, conclusion, conclusion is the action, and belonging is the outcome. So both districts really just kind of shared where they were at and just kind of opportunity for other people there to uh just kind of listen and take notes to break out of the districts. So overall, it was a, it was a great experience.
Hey, Katie, you have a separate report too?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, so I had another uh conference report, uh, this one is for March sixth. This is Reagan, Ms. Wilson, and a self-attended conference called Engaging, Managing, and Motivating Harvest Speech and Struggle Students, uh, which was led by Ryan Emmler. The topic is covered, were how did you use harvest rules, relationship building, and social emotional learning, just a few. Uh, all the topics were very relevant to a two-year class on a daily basis. Some of the things that Brian shared, the really serious words, adults have an adult's role uh in uh in work of students in general. So some of the things that um he stated were, I am always part of the problem one hundred percent of the time. Need to reflect and ask something differently. He used this phrase quite a bit the other day, which was if I change me, I change everything around me. He urged people to stop trying to make disrespectful people respectful and instead focus on being respectful to disrespectful people. And he also encouraged uh people to have a second last word, so just to avoid that that power struggle and that battle of a second last word. I'd say thanks for allowing us to do that. So overall, it was uh, it'd been a very validating uh experience. So a lot of things that he talked about were very practical. And uh, some of those things to just kind of listen to me like, yeah, that makes sense. So it was uh, it was really worthwhile, a lot of, a lot of good conversation to place at that. So thank you again for allowing us to go out.
Thank you, Mr. Calvert, you have a pitch. Item eight, approved using facilities request for the April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four agenda. Item C through C, can I have a motion?
Move.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion here. Item nine A, field trips, approved Wilson High School, mail school if needed, bill vacancies. Educational field trip to Quebec, Canada from February fifteenth through the eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, at no cost to the district. Funding for the field trip will be a combination of fundraising and parent funding, can I have a motion?
Move.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion here. Vice President Stewart, do you have the most fun report?
Not due this time, thank you.
Now, do you have a report? Yeah, it, that is, I don't know. I have a well, Superintendent Carter, you'll be forward.
Welcome, thank you for joining us this evening. I want to thank Mr. Wilkie and Cecily for a wonderful presentation on the reading series, Justice Oliveri, for her budget update. Congratulations to all the Skills USA winners, but more in particular, our Wilson's kids, who did an excellent job. As I almost said, uh, May sixth is um a busy night. It's our meet the candidate night here at five o'clock. And then at seven o'clock is the air show, the library board members, um, you're invited to both. We have May seventh is our budget hearing, six thirty, at six thirty, here in the auditorium. And then our budget vote is uh, May twenty-first, from ten o'clock to eight P at ten o'clock in the morning, eight P at night. And that will be at the center for you. So.
Thank you, Superintendent Carter. I'd just like to echo the fact that all the bridge out, all the Skills USA students have gone. Congratulations, come up the next round of competition. Mr. Oliveri, again, thank you for all the hard work you put in on the budget this year. It's not like we do have someone who will read this year, it's next year, might be a whole different story. And uh, Mr. Mr. Wilkie, thank you again for all the hard work you put in, uh, reading program. Thank you, so looking forward to the implementation of the program, so, thank you. And uh, finally, the annual proms coming up for students. A previous life that was always uh concerning time for us, so please have fun, but be safe out there. It's uh, it's uh, gonna be the best times that you remember, so, yeah, good luck. And now, if there's nothing further, blow up.
Mr. Calvert, before we we read, I just want to, I don't know if everybody read the paper tonight. There's an article in about the family that was received or else basically destroyed the player on Friday night. And there was an email sent out by Mr. Wilkie at the elementary school that the elementary school is taking donations for the family. And if anybody would like to donate, just drop them off at the office. And unfortunately, that got omitted from the newspaper article, so uh, everybody else taking donations was in there, but the elementary school didn't. But if anybody's interested, anytime you want to drop something off, it's well appreciated.
And then, Mr. Mr. Crapp, I'll make sure that it's in my, that he will, uh, that he will notice the community, I'll let it out that uh, I'll look at our record later, but I'll also mention that any donations, I can drop them off at the elementary office.
Do you think all the board members? Okay, it's not, this is the uh, public forum portion. This portion of the agenda provides for opportunity for residents of the Wilson Central School District to be heard. Any person who wishes to address the board is invited to do so at this time. Please state your name and address. Complaints or criticisms about individual school personnel are not appropriate in this forum and will not be allowed. The board may not respond to questions. They should be referred to super penance schools at another time. Please be respectful and limit your comments, three minutes. Anybody wanting to address the board? Hearing none, ask for a motion for adjournment.
So.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion here.